Delighted to have with us Washington County Commissioner Jerry Willie, who represents District Four. District Four is a large portion of the rural area of Washington County, including Banks, Oohah, North Plains, Forest Grove, Cornice, and Gaston. So Commissioner Willie, you are on.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I do resemble a little bit of the Zoom meeting with your parents. So, okay, I've got technology all around me and my five-year-old grandson is... They live in New York City, but they're now living with us. So he Zooms for all of his classes in New York. So I guess if he can do it, I should be able to do it, but not necessarily. So anyway, I'm just going to start with some overall comments about some things that we've been doing. Things that we've been doing for the past year, basically, at the county. And certainly, all of that has changed since March, when we began this pandemic modification to county operations. So anyway, about a year ago, and I think most of you probably know this, about a year ago, I started talking to the commissioners about the need for an ECDAV Economic Development Representative person on staff to begin dealing with our unincorporated areas and certainly our small rural cities. As most of them, and certainly the unincorporated areas, didn't have any ECDAV representation. So if they needed some assistance or had some plans to expand or anything like that, they generally went to the coast of city. So I started working with the commissioners to what that would look like. Subsequently, we put that into place and then we hired John Southgate as the interim. And initially, that was going to be until June of this year, the end of June. Again, when the pandemic began altering our lifestyles quite a bit, we extended his contract to December. And so he's been working for the past year. He's been working with most of the cities. The economic development managers in Washington County meet. They used to meet once a month. Now they meet once a week and talk about things that their cities are doing and what they need to get done. And that's worked really, really well. You'll hear more about that when I talk about the CARES dollars that we have and how that's going to be allocated. As you all know, Washington County, well Hillsborough, several cities came out first with grant money. And this was in March. Washington County came out subsequent to that with about a $1.1 million package. We had some grants and some loans in there. And so part of that loan portfolio was still being developed. Loans are not nearly as popular, especially when you have SBA loans, the PPE program, all of those things. So we have been, that's been rolled out a little bit slower, but we had about $1.1 million in game and that has worked out really well. We had over, we intentionally left it open for two days. The cities would open up their programs and then they would close their program when they ran out of money. Generally, that was within hours. So we wanted to get a better sense of what the market was out there. So we left it open for two days, had over 1,600 applications. Unfortunately, you know, even with the programs we had, we still probably could only reach a little over 200 businesses. But we defined it as small businesses, minority-owned businesses, and some emphasis on that. So that program has worked out really, really well. I guess probably the segue should be from that into the CARES dollars. We're all familiar with the fact that the county received $104 million from the state and the allocation of the federal CARES program. And so there was a committee formed with two commissioners on it, Roy Rogers and Sherri Harrington were the two commissioners, plus a variety of other people. There was about eight other staff folks on there that sat down and they've been working on it for probably a month. I've been bugging them every week with proposals. Because in that process also, while the CARES committee met, the folks that were assigned in charge of our million-dollar grant is... Just a second. I don't know if you know Steve Rhodes, but Steve Rhodes is the interim CAO and he's contacting me and asking me if I'm going to join the meeting and I have no idea what meeting you're talking about. So they formed, Steve Rhodes actually, formed a business committee, a business support committee, and that was chaired by Pam Trese and I. John Southgate was on that, as well as about four other stackers. And we're the ones that rolled out the million-dollar program. So now we have two groups that are dealing with basically CARES money. And the allocation that the CARES group came up to, and this is all online, we just approved this last night. The first criteria, of course, for allocation of the CARES dollars is we have to basically pay for all of the services that we are providing to deal with the pandemic. And so that's a significant cost. We have to run the emergency operations center, as well as a number of other programs. And so the group decided that to make sure that we were going to have enough money to cover these costs, $64 million, 64 of the $104 million was allocated to what they call public health. And there's a variety of things that they're going to do with that $64 million. But like I said, mostly it's to cover the cost of operations at the county and then cover some other organizations that have been significantly impacted by the CARES virus, or the virus that we're dealing with. So with that, $64 million. Then they also allocated $26.7 million to stabilize the local economy. And that's basically going to come under the business group's obligation to put that money back out into the community. So what we have agreed to do is, first of all, we're going to reimburse the cities for all the money that they paid businesses in the grants in March. That's about $2.1 million, I believe. I believe the cities were Toallerton, Tiger, Beaverton, Hillsborough, Forest Grove may have had a little bit in there. And then even North Plains had a program where if you spent money downtown North Plains, you got a credit on your water bill. And so that was hugely successful for them because they were trying to, of course, get their folks to deal with, to shop downtown North Plains where they could. So that was very successful. So those programs, all about $2.1 million. We're going to reimburse the cities for that. And that's a start. I think, for the most part, all of those cities are going to reinvest that money back into their own local economies. So I think that's going to work really well. We're still working on the details of what we want that, what our preference would be for that money to be and where it would go. The number one criteria is the federal government has very stringent guidelines on what that money can be used for, all $104 million. So at some point in time, the federal government's probably going to audit Washington County to make sure that they spent that money correctly. So when we give money to the cities and other organizations that you hear about in a minute, they're obligated to meet the criteria for the CARES funding. And so our agreements with them is if they spend the money and they can't justify the purpose of it, then they'll have to pay it back. Because we're going to have to pay it back to the federal government if we can't do that. So that's the first thing. I think the most important thing that was done with this, with our business money right now, is we allocated $500,000 to Business Resource Centers. And that's where Deanna comes into play here. This idea, again, came out of the ECDAV Directors Group. And we've got Toallerton, Hillsborough, Beaverton, and then Adelankin and Hottus in Forest Grove. Those are four Business Resource Centers. We're going to have evidently a ribbon cutting and a media blast in the next day or two. I don't know, Deanna, I just got that email this morning. Have you been in contact with them on that?
Yes, it's actually was the chamber's idea to do ribbon cuttings because we do those, obviously, and it's always nice when we can celebrate. And it's a great way to get good PR. We did the ribbon cutting for Main Street on the grand reopening. We had over 6,000 hits on our social media for that.
Yeah, that was great. Solid pictures of that. Good job on that. And I'll probably let Deanna fill you in on the blanks on the Business Resource Centers. But basically, they're designed to be a resource for businesses to go to and get help with any questions they may have. What do they get PPE? What do they have to do to meet the reopening criteria? And a whole host of other things. And so Deanna has been working with John Southgate and the other chamber folks to make sure they're ready to do this and ready to roll it out. So pretty excited about that because that's an important aspect of getting our businesses back open and up to speed again. So I'll give Deanna a few minutes here at the end and she can tell you more about the Business Resource Centers. So other than the Business Resource Centers, let me see if I can get my notes here a little bit. We have also, of the 25 million, $10 million is going to go back out in grant programs to the cities and all over Washington County. Again, this is a little bit of a challenge because we want to make sure that everybody is basically focused on the same business groups and that we're all playing by the same rules. And so we're working again with the ECDAV folks and that'll have to go through, of course, our business committee. But we're looking at a $10 million rollout for businesses. And we're hoping, quite frankly, to get that out on the street a little quicker than we did on the last one. But these things are challenges. These are not easy things to come up with the criteria. You just can't put it out there and say, "If you need some money, come ask for some money." We have to figure out what size the grants are and then if there's any other... And of course, if they've been, if they got grant money from other programs, they can apply. There's a whole myriad of things that we're going to be dealing with. There's a number of other things that we're going to do with this $26 million and I won't go into the details of it. But it's rent assistance and some workforce things. Childcare businesses is one area that has been really significantly impacted. I mean, you can imagine if you had a daycare center and you had 20 or 30 kids coming to your facility every day. With social distancing and the new rules, you could probably have half. And then those children are going to have to be protected. There's going to need to be a lot of PPE, a lot of sanitization and everything else. So there's some special money that we've allocated to help them get started. And if you want to hear more about that, I will have, of course, all of this will be formulated and put out on the internet. We'll have that. So anyway, so that's been a big time consumer of what we've been doing at the county. Literally, my 20-hour-a-week job, this is supposed to be a part-time job, has gone to over double of that. Having meetings with migrant workers, that's also a significant new concern we have. As you know, this is farmer's market season and we have lots of migrant workers who pick the fruit and vegetables and make that happen for us. And they come in from outside areas and we have to make sure that they are educated on what safety precautions they have to have. Many of them are being tested. And so we have Virginia Garcia is on the front line for that. They're visiting migrant camps every day, starting this week, every day of the week. They also working with Salud, which primarily deals with wineries. And so it's Salud and Virginia Garcia and, of course, the Washington County Health and Human Services Department is in there as well. And so we're trying to provide everything that they need to be safe. And because obviously, effective Monday, last Monday, we had reopening. And the worst thing that can happen is we have a spike in cases. And if we do that, we'll have to, we'll have to take some pretty drastic measures or we'll have to close that down again, the worst thing that we could ever want to happen. So we're...
Jerry, I have a quick question, if I can interrupt you for just a second on that note. So a lot of employers have, you know, sick leave pay for two weeks if you need to be quarantined. Do the migrant workers also have that available to them? If they by chance test positive and have to quarantine for two weeks, they just don't have that sort of, the luxury of time? They're here to pick a crop and two weeks is an enormous amount of time out of their working lives and they can't make that up?
Well, and that's exactly true. We've been talking about if we could, from the CARES dollars, if we can subsidize. Because we do have four tested positive. And three of them, I believe, have self-quarantine and the other one, we have provided housing for quarantines. And when that happens, we provide food, we provide everything that they need. But you're right, they don't have an income stream. So that's an issue. And quite frankly, that's one of the barriers why they don't get tested. If you remember, testing is 100% voluntary. So if we ask them if they want to be tested and they say no, we have to leave it at that. You also have to realize that we can test you today and you test negative. Well, we'd have to test you again tomorrow if you've been out and about in other environments. And so the testing is something that if you have symptoms, we should be testing you. But if you don't have symptoms, then they understand. So the next defensive line that we try and do with the migrant camps, and this is the employers and these migrant workers, is education. So we are letting them know of how they can protect themselves and what's the best way to stay healthy and how can we make the camps healthier. And everyone is working really, really well together with that because they realize that if they would be impacted by the virus and be out of work, they've lost a significant amount of money to help their families. And so we're trying to be helpful in every way that we can on that. So, good question. Let me stop there for a minute. I've covered a lot of stuff. Obviously, the pandemic is front and center. So does anybody have any questions on any of that I've said so far?
Jerry, it's Steve Krauchide. And you mentioned the four people that tested positive. Are those the ones from the homeless shelter or was that someone else you were referring to?
No, that's from our migrant workers.
It is. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. We tested 220 of them last week. I haven't heard the results. If you'd like to have the latest health information, since last Friday, 171 new cases in Oregon have been reported. In Washington County, we have had 21. We're Washington County, so of 171, 21. We've been somewhere around, at one point in time, early on, we were easily 20% of the reported cases. We are now down to 21 out of 171, so you can do the math. So we're in the low teens and that's where we need to stay and that's good. Moving ahead, moving ahead, we're going to, those numbers will be reported in percentages because as we increase the testing, then the reported numbers will almost send a missed message. So if we would test instead of 300 people, we test 1,000 people, we're going to have higher positive results from that. So we're doing it in percentages now and that's what you'll see coming forward. So I think that's all I have on that. Washington County is still third in the highest number of cases.
So Deanna, I have a question for the commissioner. We touched on this a little bit yesterday. We, as a utility, are kind of trying to chart what we're going to do as we come out of this regarding late fees and shut-offs and that kind of thing and trying to see the magnitude of that kind of problem and how we can deal with it. We were kind of wondering from the commissioner to know what Clean Water Services is seeing in their folks that are really not been able to pay their bills because we feel like that that may be an indicator of where we are. It just, we're just trying to map out how to get through this, making sure people are paying their bills eventually, but being sensitive to needs of right now. So any other utility information would be super helpful.
Well, I don't have any specifics, but I do know we've had conversations with PG, of course, Clean Water Services last night. At our work session yesterday afternoon, we talked to them about that as well. They're anticipating that they're going to have some late payments. I think they were talking 20%, which is kind of a number that I've heard before, but I don't want to be held to that number. I just, that's the number I toss out there. And I think all the utilities, Clean Water Services, City of Hillsborough, Water Department, all of those are anticipating that there's going to be a significant number of late payments. I haven't heard that they're going to do anything other than set up payment plans and there'll be, of course, no penalties and interest and all that kind of stuff on these things. They're just going to try and find a payment plan that'll work.
And just to kind of reassure you, we're not thinking of doing anything radical. We're just trying to kind of chart numbers so we know what we're dealing with and how we can be as lean or as flexible as possible. But knowing the scope of the problem is helpful and knowing what others are kind of doing.
Yeah, I don't know what your experience has been so far. And I don't know what PG's is either, but I'm guessing, I'm guessing it's, what? 20% sounds pretty significant to me, so... Anybody else?
Jerry, I'm wondering whether the county and as well as, obviously, Clean Water Services, I know that, you know, there are a lot of different fees that just automatically have a cost of living increase, right? That are just kind of rolled forward. I'm wondering if the county's contemplating a commission of freezing some of those automatic increases just to keep costs as low as possible?
Well, the only automatic increase that comes top of mind, of course, is property taxes. That's 3% a year and that is automatic. The rest of them have to come through the commission for approval. And if you remember, a month ago, the TDT came through and that was actually approved. Looking back, I should have voted no on that. I think I should have campaigned harder against that. Roy Rogers was not in favor of it. But I was hearing that the county mayors were actually in favor of a TDT increase. What I found out subsequently is they were in favor of it January 1, 21. Not now. Unfortunately, I didn't hear that. It wasn't a significant number, but still it was an increase. Yesterday, at work session, Land Use and Transification came and presented a 5% fee increase on a variety of items. And we pushed back on that. LUT is a department by 20 years ago or something like that. The county board decided that it was a cost recovery department. So they have to, their fees have to cover all of their costs and very little money comes from general fund. So with that, they have determined a few years ago that they were running in the red and implemented a 5% per year increase over three years. And this was year two. Commissioner Trese and I pushed back on that. And so we got an update on that to the full commission yesterday and we agreed upon a 2.5% increase now at a 2.5% in January 1, depending on where the economy is and how things are going. So that's kind of contingent. A 5% increase represents about $250,000 in fees and it's primarily in permits. Permits and people who walk up to the county, pre-planning, those kinds of things. So, yeah, we have to, we're trying to walk a fine line there. But I think you're going to, that's what you're going to see in the budget is a 2.5% increase on those. There is a, there's a whole litany of fees all over in all departments and we do review those every year. It's not going to be across-the-board increase. A few of them are going up a little bit, but nothing that will significantly impact that. It's certainly not businesses with the exception of what I just talked about with LUT.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I have a question. And I don't want to make this sound like, sound wrong, but it's almost like it, it seems like it's taken a while for the county to come together with a plan for how to distribute this monies out of this $104 million. And I know you talked about the complexities of that. But can you drill down a little bit for us on what some of the barriers or challenges have been to that and how we can help if there is something that we can help as a business community to get by those barriers?
Well, I think, affecting yesterday, the plan has been approved. So there isn't any more barriers. The next barriers, quite frankly, are the various groups of people that are assigned this money and where to spend it. So, for example, the, well, let's take the biggest number, $64 million for public health. Again, the number one criteria for that was to make sure that we had money to cover the expenses that we are incurring as a county. So we wanted to make sure we had a fairly significant pot of money. The contact tracers, 180 of them we had to hire. We had to hire an employment agency to do that. And that was in two different levels. And so we actually hired two employment agencies. One to hire the professional staff and the other was to hire and train just the contact tracers that were going to educate to do this. Those two together were $10 million. So not cheap stuff. The, so that was under the $64 million and that allocation is pretty much rolling out. The money that will impact directly the businesses is what's going to fall under, basically, Pam and I's responsibility. The $10 million to put the grants together, getting the money back to the city so they can, again, spend that out. That money is, we're going to try and be as quickly as we can on that. And we'd love to have that out there in two weeks. Not sure we can do that. But another program that's inside of that, again, inside kind of our responsibility is the one that I found out yesterday. City of Hillsborough is doing a PPE program where they're helping their businesses. So they're going out and buying the PPE needed at a discount because right now everybody's increasing their prices. And then they're providing that to the city, to the businesses in the city at a discounted rate. And then I think they're also matching it. And so, Deanna, you might know more about this. I just read this online yesterday.
It's a one-to-one match, right? So if somebody spends $50, they'll get $50 additional PPE.
Okay, all right, yeah.
And it's, I think the press release for that's coming out this afternoon.
Okay. So that's a program that we don't have to reinvent. That's a program we should be able to say, okay, I think we have $1 million allocated for that. I don't know how far $1 million to go. If we need more, we might reallocate some other things. So that's just one of the programs that we're really looking at. But you're exactly correct, Keith. Bureaucracy moves very, very slowly and that's why Deanna knows this. I have, I literally... I have, I literally made three presentations to the CARES group asking for money upfront early. Went 0 for 3, but at least finally we got that. And we got the amount of money that we were asking for. So that was a good thing when we got to the end of the day, but it was very painful to, for us to spend three weeks kind of standing on the curb with our hat in our hand begging for money. But I think we're beyond that. I'm hoping that we can get the rest of it taken care of in, in a much more orderly fashion.
Thank you.
Jerry, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to mention that as court and medical interpreter, I often run into people who, who are asked, and why did you continue to work? And why did you continue to work? And the answer is because they couldn't afford to, to not go to work. And, and so I'm thinking of the contact tracers asking people to stay put for 14 days. And if their, if their employment doesn't pay for them while they're at home and their work can't be done remotely, we're in a bind here and this could be a public health issue. So is there anything the county can do for people in that kind of position? They might be freelancers, they may be cherry pickers, they may be a variety of kinds of things. Is there any place people in those kinds of situations can go when they tell the contact tracers, look, I'm in a bind with work, I can't afford to stay home?
Part of that CARES money is, is designated, part of that $64 million is designated exactly for that. So I'm speaking way outside my pay grade here. Marnie were here, she could answer that question really easy. It's my understanding that we have money designated so that if someone goes into that situation and they can't go to work, they can't go to store and all of that, we provide 100% of their daily needs. So we bring them food, we bring them medicine if they need it, we pay them. So it is, it's a supplemental program. It probably, I don't know if it, if it's better than unemployment. I mean, at least, you know, unemployment, you'd be waiting till August before you get your first check, but, but no, our, our program is, there is money designed to help those people, so they just need to call the county. And the contact tracer should take care of that.
Thank you.
Jerry, I have a question. You talked about childcare, which I think is great because there are, you know, that's going to be an issue for folks that are trying to go back to work if they don't have any childcare facilities to take their kids to. But the other industry that I've been quite concerned about are our local restaurants that, you know, really do provide the flavor of every community and they have, you know, they're not often in big facilities. So doing the six feet distancing, doing the, you know, 25% of capacity or 50% capacity, I mean, it really almost doesn't pay for them to open up or to do anything beyond delivery and, and takeout. I'm just wondering if you've thought about from a standpoint of how the county and some of these grant dollars might be able to assist our local restaurants that are, you know, not national brands, but really mom and pop, but really do make up the fabric of our communities?
Well, that certainly has been a focus. It hasn't necessarily just been on the restaurant industry, but it certainly is on the smaller businesses. And when I say small, I mean 25 employees or less. And so, yeah, our focus has been on that. It's been on, quite frankly, it's been on minority owned businesses as well. And so we have tried to use a pretty broad brush on where that money could go and reaching to those people. We've reached out to our community-based organizations which represent our minority community. We've reached out to them and asked them to talk to their folks, to their businesses and make sure they contact us and apply for these monies. So, yeah, we're, we're trying to do that. Restaurants are particularly in a real bind and it's because of the, the very reasons you said, reduced capacity. I've heard on a few occasions that the restaurants weren't going to open up because they couldn't meet the criteria.
Well, and also, you know, the, the PPE program, I think, is really important because that is a barrier and there are industries that have, you know, a higher threshold of, you know, the types of PPE they need to provide, whether it's to their employees or to their customers, you know, a restaurant that's required to have their employees wear a face mask, they're, I mean, I think it was Marnie that sort of set the standard of, so that's three per employee, one to wear, one to have, one to wash. And so if you think about that from a standpoint of an employer, cost of making sure that everybody's got that, anything I think that the county could do, and I think the cities to help offset those sort of, you know, it's almost a nickel and dime kind of, of cost to them, but it's significant. And then there's also the issue of procuring it, right? So you can't, it's hard to go out and buy five masks. You can buy 50,000, but not a lot of businesses have a need for that.
Yeah, yeah, you're exactly correct. And that's, those are the things that we're going to be trying to focus on immediately. I mean, it's almost providing PPE and that program is probably almost as important as pure grant dollars in their hands because they can't do one without the other. They've got to have both. So I'll, I'll forward this on to Mr. Southgate and tell him that you've told him to get off his butt and get this done, right?
Exactly. Well, and I think that, you know, the, I think the most important thing is making sure that businesses, you know, don't try to cut corners with the PPE, right? And if cost becomes a factor, you know, that, that might be a corner that they cut and then we end up with a spike. And then we end up with really bad draconian efforts, you know, to get it back under control and nobody wants that. So, you know, if we can just make it easy for them to create this really safe environment for their employees as well as their customers, I'm, I think that's, that's money well spent.
Yeah, yeah, I agree completely. Mr. Davis?
I'm, I'm thinking about the restaurants. I have a program at, at Liftex where we buy lunch for everybody on Thursday. So we find a different restaurant every week that's willing to bring individual lunches so we can spread them out and keep our social distancing program. Maybe Southgate could foster that program and encourage businesses, you know, I'm more than 25, I'm nearly 50 people, and encourage more people to do that. I think that might be a help for these restaurants. The other thing that I'm trying to get going and, and would like to do, they all need to have disposable menus now or some kind of a throwaway thing. So I'm, I've been offering any restaurant in Hillsborough that needs menus that they're going to throw away, I'll print them for them. So I'm, I'm just trying to find ways to get that word out and, and try to help them that way. Maybe, maybe I should talk to Southgate about that or I don't know who to, who to go to to help me.
Well, John, John would be a good place to start. I mean, John and I are going to have a conversation later today. We talk almost every day multiple times. So I'll certainly share that information with him. You know, we talk about business resource centers. That information could go to them as well and they share that. I think it is going to be a little bit of an all hands on deck, especially in the restaurant industry to get them back up and going again. And it's going to be months before that really happens back to even close to 100%, but at least, yeah, we need to have some new creative ideas now to get them going today.
I'm just wondering from Les, what time is lunch on Thursday?
It's right around noon.
Okay, just, I think those are great programs, Les, and I really, I mean, we, we're happy to promote that and help out because I think, yeah, I mean, the, the additional cost of disposable menus for a restaurant, I mean, now it's on top of, on top of, on top of.
I'll get some information about how to get them.
So Les, instead of 50 lunches, you probably should plan for 51 lunches on Thursday, you know?
I can do 51.
There's 13 of us on the call, so.
There you go.
Hey Jerry, I have a question about the contract trace, contact tracers. And you may have answered this, I was on a call for the first 10 minutes of this call, so I missed part of it. But is part of the CARES Act money, is that just to get the contract tracers hired and up and running? Or is, how long is that budgeted money for if this were to continue to, a need for those tracers for the next year, two years, three years? Is that CARES money or is that going to become a line item that the county has to budget for out of some other fund?
Well, let's just say that hopefully it doesn't go that long. The CARES money has to be spent and utilized by December 31st this year. So we've got $104 million, we have to spend it. One of the things that we were initially negotiating with the chambers, because again, part of that, part of that money that is in the business committee's responsibility is we're paying the chambers to do this. Initially, we said for a year and then it was pointed out to us that we can't pay them to do services for a year. Our contract with them is through December 30th because that's as far as the CARES money goes. Can't pay them in advance, can't pay them for anything beyond that. So the contact tracers, same scenario. They're on until December 30th. If we still have issues, I mean, our government's got a lot of money. I mean, the printing, the print press is still working full time. So they'll kick in some money, I think, at that point in time, but I think the, the hope is that we won't have a need for that in December.
But Jerry, don't you think that, I think there's been some discussion with PCC about the fact that, you know, this is sort of a new career track for folks, right? The idea that we'll never need another contact tracer, we now know we do. And potentially we should have a curriculum stood up for folks that are trained to do this work and it's part of an academic program.
I don't, I don't disagree at all. And I think you're, you're correct. This is going to be a part of the new normal. I just don't know how that, what that looks like. And it seems like everybody's jumping on the same bandwagon about training and educating contact tracers. We'll have to, I guess we'll have to let that industry work out the details on it.
It's always follow the money, right? So if there's money being talked about, everybody's on the bandwagon, right?
Well, that's exactly, especially, especially good old government money. Always plenty of it. Anybody else? I got a couple of items to talk about if we're done with that. I mean, we're going to come back because this is, again, this, there's been no other conversations hardly at all, with the exception of a few other things that I'm going to bring up. This is also budget season and because we have to approve our budget. Remember our fiscal year is July 1 to June 30th, so 19, 20 fiscal year is winding down. At the end of this month, we had to have our budget approved and we did that last week. And so our budget at the county is $1.3 billion. Our general fund is about $330 million, so it's about, I don't know, 20% of, 30% whatever that is. Most of our money at the county level comes from property taxes in the general fund. And so we're anticipating that come November, people will, there'll be still a few folks that won't be able to pay their property taxes. So we've kind of shaved that number down. We usually use a 96% collection rate. I think we shaved it down to 94. But for the most part, we're not anticipating that that's going to be a significant hit revenue wise. Where we are going to be impacted is, as you've heard, the state is projecting a shortfall of three plus billion dollars and not just for the upcoming year, but for two or three years in advance. The state funds for much of our Health and Human Services, much of our jail services, juvenile detention services. There's a whole myriad of, of departments that live off of state funding. And we've been put on notice that that's not going to be funded at the same level it was last year. And that's, that is significant. So that's going to have an impact. We're going to have to probably lay people off. And I don't know what we're going to do with that. We have, the budget we approved is, is our final budget for now, but we are revisiting that in September because we know that we have revenues projected in that budget that we will not achieve. So, so we're going to be redoing our budget probably in September and that's not going to be pretty. I, I just don't, I just don't see how, I just don't see how we're going to get the state money that we typically anticipated. It's going to be really, really hard. So I guess stay tuned with that. But we have passed a budget for right now, but like I said, things like lottery dollars. We get a couple million dollars of lottery money every year. We're anticipating that probably could be reduced by 25, 30, 40%. If you've heard Carolyn McCormick with Westy County District Association, that money is from lodging. I think she, I can't remember what, she might have cut her budget 50%. And that all has a trickle down. The fairgrounds and the fair all get transit lodging tax money. So these things, these things have a way of rippling through a number of budgets outside of the county. And so that's, stay tuned with that. That's, that's not good news.
Jerry, are you hearing that the potential CARES Act 4, would that provide any local government dollars like, like you, that county received this time that might be a little less tethered to CARES Act and might be allowed to do backfill of some budgets?
Well, I haven't heard a lot about CARES Act 4. I know they've been talking about it. Here's what I, here's what I do know. We got 104 million and the state has, and we've, we've requested the state to, out of their $3 billion or whatever it is that they got, can't remember, 1.2 billion or something, that they should be reimbursing the cities. And they have basically said, yeah, we'll reimburse the cities that are cities, not in counties that got CARES money. So Western County cities aren't going to get any of that. That's why we have part of our CARES money. We are reimbursing the cities for the grant money, like I said, but we're also reimbursing them for any CARES costs that they have. And again, that's part of, I can't remember the amount of money. It's part of $10 million, I believe, that was allocated that is going to be doled out back to, to cities and other organizations that have incurred significant costs to upgrade their, their facilities and everything else to meet the new demands of the, of the virus. So stay tuned on CARES 4, I guess. So that's our, that's our budget scenario.
Jerry?
Yes?
A question here. I, I heard you talk about the impact of the lottery. And the lottery is also impacted by how many people can go into restaurants or pubs who can, where people can play the lottery. And that's impacted by the, you know, by the impact of the coronavirus and how many people can, and all that stuff. I mean, it's a public health issue. So does downstream from here, should, should maybe some, the tax structure should be reconsidered on things of that nature because it could have kind of a long-term impact? I mean, people would probably end up paying the same amount of taxes just restructured? Is that something that could be sent to our state legislators?
I'm not sure I understand the picture. So let me, let me talk about the lottery machines first. Of course, those have to be moved to be socially distanced. And if you're a business owner and you have lottery machines, you can't move them. Only they can move them. So you can imagine how long that line is. And you can't disconnect them. So in other words, if you had six in a row, you can't disconnect three of them because, well, I guess you could, you would get their immediate attention, but would probably not be a friendly conversation. So you can see the complications on all of that. Now, the tax structure, I'm not sure I'm following you on. Are we talking about tax on lottery dollars? Or are we talking about taxes in general?
What I'm seeing is that the lottery funds a lot of things that the state depends on. And so instead of the lottery funding those things, because those things be funded by other taxes instead.
Not in this current environment. I mean, like I said, the state's anticipating a $3 billion shortfall. We're anticipating the ripple effect of that, that we could be several million dollar shortfall just from what the state is not going to give us. So I wouldn't anticipate that. I mean, it's actually on the flip side. You've heard the governor say she's considering new taxes.
Okay.
I think that pretty well sums it up.
Jerry, can you talk a little bit about the event center?
Yeah, there's two things there, the event center and the fair. As you know, we were going to go to a 10-day fair this year. It was going to start about 22nd or 3rd or something of July. We were using that as kind of the baseline for a kickoff with the event center at the same time. I'm a member of the fair board as well. And we made a decision last month that we would cancel the fair. Most of the fairs around Oregon and in the region are being canceled. The, and the reason for that is pretty obvious. First of all, large gatherings of people. The reason why we had to make the decision in May versus waiting until June or later is because we have contracts that we have to issue for the carnivals, for all of the vendors, if we're going to have any entertainment. All of those contracts had to be signed by June 1. And so we had to make the decision to cancel the fair. So we're doing that. The event center, obviously, has some of the same restrictions. I think the construction of the event center is going to be done sometime in June. I haven't heard, it's being delayed, obviously, because of social distancing for the construction workers and all of that. But I haven't heard that finishing date is in July, but it's close. Let's just say in the next month. So we're pretty excited about that. But obviously, we have stopped booking events unless they were in distant future. And the events that, we did have some events scheduled for August and September. I think those have been put on hold. So we've got a brand-new Spithy Event Center. It's kind of like, I'll dress up and know where to go. That's kind of where the event center is right now. So stay tuned. I think if I had to guess, we're going to try and have a grand opening in September. Anything else?
Thank you. Can I just ask a question about the, because I know that there's quite a significant amount of the operations. I mean, obviously, if it's not operating, there's no cost other than just keeping the building up and running. But that there's, that some of the operational costs are actually coming from TLT dollars. And has there been sort of a relook at that budget, depending upon sort of how long it takes the travel and tourism piece of the, of our economy to recharge, if you will?
Yeah, absolutely. When the money was allocated for the event center to be built, there was also a pool of funding in there because we knew it would not be profitable for possibly up to three years. So we have a reserve of money that we're going to be calling on at a little bit more rapid pace, obviously, for the next several months to pay for the operational costs, even though it's not open. I mean, obviously, it's not as expensive, but it's, there will still be some overhead costs. We do have some money set in reserves for that. And we'll just have to wait and see what that looks like six months from now.
Thank you.
Okay? So before we depart here, we are in phase one. Phase one started Monday. We are required to stay in phase one for three weeks. We can apply for phase two status in two weeks. It is our intent to do that. So June 15 is our two-week mark. We intend, unless we have a spike, we intend to apply for phase two, and that would come into place a week later. So what does phase two look like? I have no idea. I don't think the rules have been drawn up yet, but.
Just released.
Just released?
Yeah, the governor just released. Yep.
So anyway, keep your fingers crossed, stay healthy, keep your distance and wear your masks. And that's all a part of life. And hopefully, we'll get into phase two in three weeks.
Any final questions for our wonderful commissioner? I will say, and I, because I do watch the commission meetings and, you know, have obviously a rapport with John Southgate and with Commissioner Willie. Truly, it has been frustrating to get the plan put together for the money being spent quickly. But I will say that Jerry has been just a huge leader in moving that forward. And I'm not sure where we would be at this point if you hadn't really pushed on getting those dollars out the door to our, to our local businesses. So I want to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, thank you. We have, we still have a lot of work to do. So we'll see if we can get that done a little bit more efficiently.
Excellent, well, thank you. We're happy to help and be a part of, and help you and assist you any way we can. So just one little final note, since I have a host of folks on. We're in need of a forklift to get the barrel of hand sanitizer off of a truck on Friday. If anybody's got a forklift or feels like they're up to actually lifting it off there themselves, that's great. But part of the City of Hillsborough's PPE grants includes hand sanitizer at different locations throughout the community, and we're one of those locations. And it's evidently in a rather large container. So just send me a message if you have a forklift and are willing to come and lend your bronze and brain to get it into our office. And I think tomorrow, our program is Brad and myself are center stage, talking about how to be a good customer. So really trying to help encourage our community to assist our small businesses and give them a break and help them stay safe and actually go out and shop and start filling up those tills again. Thank you, Jerry, for being with us here today. Truly appreciate it.